And the seniors, like, I cannot believe you guys did graduation and then a couple hours later, you're playing a game. I mean, that just is incredible. And coaches, I love you guys. I mean, you guys just really, the coaches here at Kiowa Heights take kids, like, normal kids. They're not like more than bred to be ball players and everything else. And you take these kids and you turn them into athletes. And you turn them into just good human beings. And it just is so powerful to watch. So it's my little self-ack. And just thank you guys. It really, it was, it couldn't come at about our time. I think we needed, we needed that.
You actually were, you were actually the, if I was to look in the dictionary and just look at the four word team, I think that would be your picture there. I mean, it really would be because, because I, I saw so much camaraderie between all of you. You came together as a team, actually made this gigantic run, which was just incredible. I, I can't say enough good words. Yeah, like, yeah.
And I, you gotta get a little bit old coaching me. And, and, you know, I coached for a lot of years and a couple of things. And there's a reason I stand in the back of the hands on football games. It's because sometimes I say things I shouldn't say. And I, I really don't want anybody to hear it. And, and it's hard in a softball game because I, I know, I still have a coach's voice and I'm very loud. And, and after Sidney took the dive into the dugout and I said some, yelled something across the field and then the first base umpire stared me down for the next two innings. I think it looked good at the Super Nintendo and the school got thrown out of state championship. But, you know, a couple of things that I know about sports is you don't have great teams without great senior leadership. Julia, Sidney, Jesse, Matty, great senior leadership. You lost last year, terrible. Nobody knew anything about Kiowa Heights from two years ago. And, and you caught fire. And the best thing was that that spirit that you guys had as a team carried over into the building. And you guys dictated the spirit of the entire district for that four-week run that you guys made the state championship. And, and that was tremendous and incredible. And thank you for the memories. Thank you for not letting me get thrown out of the state championship game. But just thanks for all that you've done seniors. And an underclassman, that sets the bar high for you. And I, I'm a firm believer, you do, you do not have great teams without great senior leadership. And, and that those four young ladies were a part of this. But they also set the bar high and set the standard high for, for the underclassmen. And, and that's a lot to live up to. And, and the best part about it was you guys had fun playing. I, I coached a wrestling team one time that went thirteen and two, and I couldn't wait for them to graduate because they were miserable to be around. But you guys had so much fun. And that energy made you so much better as a team. That was incredible. So I'm gonna read what's on each of the, I see I am too loud. Each of you is gonna get a certificate. We're gonna call you up as a team, like to get some pictures taken in front of the banner there. But a special board recognition presented to the Kiowa Heights Board of Education. I'd like to congratulate the Kiowa Heights varsity softball team on their outstanding season. In 2021, OHSA softball division four state where offense congratulated on your tremendous accomplishment. So we can have Alexis Baycheck, Jakai Baker, Katie Calvi, Tess Conroy, Madison Dobson, Sidney Dyer, Julia Harris, Madison Kuznoa, Jesse Novak, Alzay Reyes, Tessa Stenhouse, Kayla Valley, Maddie Vance, Bella Williams, and Cera Wise. If you ladies will come forward, I'm gonna give you these certificates and we'll get a picture taken. Ladies, thank you for seeing you. If you move on, underclassmen, our set highs, get back. Now, as a student, we always celebrate, it's probably time to take them off our ice cream right now, so. We're gonna give you the opportunity to, to vacate unless you wanna stay here and listen to Fushio's financial report. Anyway, big plus talk.
Thanks, Mr. Mr. President. I wanted to approve of five A motion for minutes in June act 2021, and it is found in attachment C1. Item six A, motion to accept bank reconciliation, financial reports, and payments for board review. As of May thirty versus 2021, is prepared to certify about the treasure is accurate. It's found in attachment C2. Item six B, motion to approve purchase orders for five thousand is found in attachment C3. Item six C, motion to accept the attached list of donations received through May thirty first, 2021. It's found in attachment C4. Item six D, motion to approve the temporary appropriations for fiscal year 2022 as prepared by the treasurer. It's found in attachment C5. Item six E, motion to approve the depository agreement with Huntington Bank, commencing on eight twenty-three twenty-one through eight twenty-two twenty-six. It's found in attachment T6. Item six F, motion to approve the following fund-to-fund transfers. Operational transfers out represents money's move from and to another fund permanently. Seventy-five thousand from O-O-One General Fund to three hundred dash nine five zero zero Athletic Fund. And a hundred thousand dollars from O-O-One General Fund to O-O-Six dash zero 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 Food Service Fund. Item six G, approve advances. Motion to approve the following fund-to-fund advances. Advances out temporarily reallocate cash from and to another fund with an expectation of repayment. One thousand dollars from O-O-One General Fund to five ten dash one two one A Broad and Outflow fifty. Twelve thousand dollars from O-O-One General Fund to five seventy-two dash nine nine two one Title One. Ten thousand dollars from O-O-One General Fund to five ninety dash nine nine two one Title Two A. And five thousand dollars from O-O-One General Fund to five nine nine dash nine nine two one Title Four A. Item six H, motion to establish Title Four Part A Student Support and Academic Enrichment Fund, number five eighty-four. At the request of the Ohio Department of Education, auditor of state will change the fund code for Title Four Part A from five ninety-nine to five eighty-four beginning in state fiscal year 2022. Ask motions five A, six B, through six H for approvals.
Can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's business consent agenda motions? Moved by Mr. Adams, seconded by Mr. Hayman. Discussion.
I just wanted to point out a few things on here. If we look at six A, I won't jump into the financial reports. I'll save that for next month because we're at the fiscal year. But we are trending under budget on all of our expense lines that we have, which is good news. So I anticipate that we're looking at a surplus when we look at our year-end budget next meeting, which will be the twenty-first, twenty-something of July. So we'll talk about the fiscal year end wrap-up. And again, our five-year forecast was very conservative and it forecasted deficit, this year a small deficit, a couple hundred thousand dollars relatively speaking. But due to, you know, having year, commander B, we're looking at a surplus and I will highlight that mark the next quarter. Item six B, purchase orders over five thousand through open attachment T dash three. It's our lead sheet. We have a number of purchase orders for approval. The majority are for next fiscal year. So a lot of these are housekeeping issues that we have in fiscal twenty-two. So our fiscal year ends six thirty and starts seven one for people listening at home. So we're gonna see a lot of purchase orders, blanket purchase orders for utilities, for electric, water, sewer, legal counsel, gas. And those are to pay our bills for a lot of the blanket purchase orders that we have. Items one, two, and three are kind of single items that we have. So one and two are four stripper machines that we have for the elementary school and high school. And number three is bike eye surface maintenance. That's the district park lot repairs and sealings that we have.
So in regards to the strippers, we actually need two, we could provide a second one.
Can't they, they're really not transportable. One will do the middle of high school, which is what we have now. These are, they're actually countable, so they strip with water. So much safer. And I think one of the board members asked about bids on this. That's Ohio Schools Council pricing. That's through Ohio Schools Council. That's a pre, that's a, that's a bid price there through Ohio Schools Council. That's why they're wanting two additional quotes of that, sort of done by OSB force. Our donations received, we open C4, attachment C4. We have three up through five thirty-one. So we have number one Janet Shaw. That's the Michael Wright Scholarship Fund, one hundred dollars. Carolyn Glenn Schroeder, Michael Wright Scholarship Fund, six hundred dollars. And number three is the Kiowa County Board of Health. They donated twelve thousand gloves, twelve thousand surgical masks, one thousand eight hundred K ninety-five masks, one hundred and twenty K N ninety-five masks, and one hundred and twenty face shields. So we want to thank all of the donors for their gracious donations. Our temporary appropriations for fiscal year 2022, we open attachment T5. We can see our temporary appropriations. Again, these are just temporary. We'll work on our original permanent appropriations, August, September, somewhere along that timeline. But I just wanted to point out, our major fund is our general fund. That's seventeen point seven million dollars approximately. And if you scroll down to the second page of that attachment, you can see the five-year forecast. And on line five point zero five zero would be our total expenses. And if we look at column 2022, we're gonna see that that amount is seventeen million, seven hundred sixty-six thousand, six thirty-five, which is the amount that we're appropriating for our general fund. So we're following our five-year forecast, which is our roadmap of where we're at. But, you know, the other funds that we have, if there are any questions, I can add specifics on that one. But again, this-
So the one you opened, you said total?
Yeah. Yeah. We look at our line five point zero one zero. It's highlighted orange too. And we go across to column 2022, which is next fiscal year.
Yes.
We can see that amount is seventeen point seven million dollars. So that's our amount of what we're appropriating. And again, this is just temporary appropriations we're working on. Actual appropriations as we start again to the school year. We have six E. This is to renew our depository agreement with Huntington Bank, our partnership. That's for five years. Partnership's been outstanding from my point of view. So no need to change. The bank's been, you know, very good throughout my tenure years. So it's a pleasure to renew that. Six F is approved transfers. We have two transfers. And those transfers are within our five-year forecast, hundred seventy-five thousand. Initially, we estimated what that's gonna be, and it was actually switched. So the estimate was a hundred thousand initially to the athletic fund and seventy-five thousand to the food service fund. But as the year progressed, and this is the COVID year, so everything's kind of, you know, backwards through it. It made more sense to do it this way, seventy-five thousand to athletics and one hundred thousand to food service. So the amount is still hundred seventy-five thousand that we had planned for, but it's just switching up where it's better suits, just how things evolve. And it's weird for everything. Item six G is advances. We have four advances. This'll fit into our budget. Don't necessarily plan for advances. Now, advances, you always kind of repay yourself, so it's a net effect of zero. So we're gonna advance funds for this fiscal year. Then we're gonna advance back into the general fund. So we'll see that motion on an upcoming board meeting as we head into fiscal year 2022. This is just really due to the fact that these grants were still expending money. We've incurred bills that we have, so we still have to pay those. And we can pay them for three months in the next fiscal year. So that's why advances, that's why the tool is out there. You know, sometimes I try not to have advances, just, it's kind of easier accounting-wise not to have as many transactions. So we can look at that. Last year, we didn't have any, but this was the COVID year, so it really, you know, we had more grants in place. So the focus was really more on S R one and all the S R's that were coming down. Let's see, six H. So this came down from both the other state and Ohio Department of Education. So if we were to open that attachment that we have in the public content, all this really is, is the Ohio Department of Education, for some reason, they want to just do a fund code change. So they're changing our Title Four A, which we currently have right now as fund five ninety-nine. And they want to create a whole new account as five eighty-four. So we're gonna have to close out five ninety-nine. We're establishing five eighty-four. And that's where Title Four will be carried forward in this decision. I, I have no real good answer of why they're doing that now, especially with COVID time. Somebody somewhere thought this was a good idea. I mean, instead of reaction, how long would they do it?
Five ninety-nine's a miscellaneous grant fund. And so five eighty-four originally was our preschool grants. With the Every Student Succeeds Act, some of the changes to the law, well, student safety and wellness is one of the three areas that you have to hit with a Title Four fund. So I think, I think really they're changing five eighty-four and they want to get all the grants out of miscellaneous and get them in more specificity. That's, that's what I've been able to put together. It was an interesting change.
It seemed like the wheel had been, you know, spinning, you know, well along all the way. And then they wanted to just make this change for, you know, we'll, we'll roll along with that soon.
Some intelligence behind it, it's, it's exciting.
Yeah. So as for those, much as usual.
Okay, interesting discussion. I just want to say thank you to the people that donated to the scholarship fund. So it's appreciated.
Mr. Adams.
Hi.
Mr. Hayman.
Hi.
Mrs. Etter.
Hi.
Mr. Sjager.
Hi.
Mr. Sugar.
I, motion yes, five to zero.
And then I have one other item, eight A. This was pulled out of the consent agenda in Kansas-Lincoln. We sit on board. So motion to approve new vendors to the school district for W nine's attachments, found in attachment T seven. And this is for the open attachment seven. It's just one Western Kiowa County Schools crisis team counseling team.
Interesting piece of background about what it is. So I'm trying to think, in two thousand and four, fall of two thousand and four. So it's been going on for seventeen years. Lakewood County Schools had a crisis team where they would go out to the school if there was a student or a staff member that. And they would help provide counseling services. And so Kiowa County found the need for that. And so a team began. And I'm fortunate enough, you know, as a counselor, Lakewood's we asked to be part of that. And I have sort of like various roles on it. Basically, what we do, and I believe, I should know this. There's fourteen or fifteen local districts. They are not western, although we say western. We have Rocksville. We have, what else? We go to the west side, like Rocky River, Lakewood, Fairview, North Olmsted, Olmsted Falls. So I'm not really sure where the western came from, but that's, you know, there, there's a bunch of school districts. And so what happens is there's about seventeen members made up of mostly school counselors, but also some school sites. We do have some school administrators and some teachers. And when there's a doubt of a student or staff member, we are called out to go to the school and provide services. Usually the services are, we do group counseling for the day. We do classroom presentations. Like if the students, we follow the student schedule, or maybe they have a assembly. And we also provide one-on-one services. And one, it's just one day. And then we give follow-up to the school personnel. So it, it's a much-needed, unfortunately, type of team. It's very rewarding to be part of it. Our school counselor here, Holly Grantshire, when she was in Rocksville, was part of the team. And she's, you know, still continuing on the team too. So it's, it's just one of those things that it's important to have. And, and let that Kiowa Heights support the mother. It's a good thing.
So now, that's for that after approval.
Okay. So can I have a, a motion by Mr. Hayman, which will be seconded by Mr. Adams. There was a discussion. Okay. Any questions or, we're very young. Go talk.
Mr. Hayman.
Hi.
Mr. Adams.
Hi.
Mrs. Etter.
Hi.
Mr. Sjager.
Hi.
Mr. Sugar. Oh, sorry. Yep, I'm staying.
Motion yes, four zero. And it's, there are just discussions.
Just had a couple items I wanted to talk about. Nine A is the broadband amendment. And I'll bring Mr. Evans on this too. So there's quite a bit here that I listed in the public content. I didn't read through it, but I'll just kind of summarize. The issue is, at the last minute and without testimony to the Senate's version of the state operating budget, this amendment, known as the broadband amendment, was added. And what this amendment does is it prohibits public and private entities from working together to improve broadband accessibility and affordability. It makes it illegal to operate a government-owned network of any kind in locations which spectrum or AT&T offers service fees of greater than ten minutes per second. So what this means for us, we are a partner with an entity called Neonet. And effectively, Neonet would be potentially put out of business with this broadband amendment. What that would mean is we would have higher costs for our internet. We'd have to go out to the private sector instead of utilizing Neonet. Neonet's considered an ITC, information technology center. So our partnership with them, the whole internet would cease with this law, is my understanding. And Neonet houses our entire financial accounting system as well. So we go to Neonet's website, we log in, as many school districts do, and they have our whole history of, you know, accounting and financial software. So I'm very concerned from that aspect that, you know, if they were to lose the ability to provide internet to school districts, which they've run on many, many school districts, that something could happen with our accounting software. So that's, you know, up at the top for my concerns, as well as the high cost and other areas that would be affected.
Just through the conversation with the lobbyists for the last college schools and also the first ring, that their feelings are that this, this bill, this was added to the bill in the eleventh hour as a bargaining chip. Quite often used against the fair funding plan. And, and a lot of the lobbyists have explained to us that quite oftentimes, in the eleventh hour, one side or the other will add some additional parts to the, to the budget bill to use as chips to say, well, you give us our seventh educational funding plan. We'll drop the, so we're hopeful that's the cases. But, but every organization is working. OSBA, BASSA, the Treasurers Association are all, are all working against this. And right now, it's only had proponent testimony. Proponent testimony is scheduled for next week. So I'm sure that that'll come back.
I just wanted to add two things to the, we know that for discussion. So Neonet provides for us district technology services, fiscal services, internet services, student services, virtual services, and market services. And what can we do? So we can communicate to our legislators and the conference committee members, which I have listed here in the public comments section with their pro members. So Erica Crowley, Philip Plummer, Scott, can't pronounce his last name, Matt Dolan, Teresa Korn, and Vern Sykes.
So my understanding is that this has to be finalized before the end, by the end of this month? So by our next quarterly, this would have been settled?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, the budget bill. And some thought there was gonna be announcements today. We heard yesterday that no. And that was not a good sign. So actually, it looks like that committee is gonna carry on the next week based on a conversation I got today with, update I got today. So that, that, that's a little bit better. That would have meant that the Senate got their way on the, on the funding portion of it. So it's still representative of, still no bad one going.
Will be something that's like a quick, like, or will it be a product? Like, do you have a name? I just can't see.
Well, which is, which is one of the major problems. This is, this is very similar to what they did with the, the academic distrust mission. This, it was, it was added in. And they actually, that was even worse because they didn't offer any testimony. They just added it and approved it and boom. All of a sudden, we had academic, the next day, young sons have academic distrust because they passed it, they, they passed this part of the budget. So it, it's just, it's, it's political gamesmanship. It's, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, there's a, there's a lot of partisanship involved in it. And, and that's just, that's the way that the lobby, the lobbyists and vote groups are explaining. Nobody in education at all would rally around this. But I, but the people that, and, and this is a, this traces back to Senator Hoffman and somebody at the group yesterday described as maybe one of the most anti-public education state, state senators we've ever had. So it's, it's very discomforting at this point. They're, they're playing games. They're playing games a lot with education. They're playing games for the court card. They're playing games for funding. And, and, and just, there's just so many things right now that, for whatever reason, that the legislature's taking on or they have not previous, previous numbers.
Just to understand, so like from a technology perspective, and I can jump in on this too. I guess it's like, is that, is that because we have to run the planet carriers? So that would mean that, that really may convince the bill into our internet connectivity? Like, is this basically redundancy? Like, do we have to actually buy that separately ourselves?
Yeah.
Like, in security about our, and it's like network?
Neonet does our firewall.
The costs are astronomical then.
Neonet. Spectrum and our, and they're challenging a bit with this. They love all this. This is, you know, they're, they are, they are challenging a bit because this, this opens up a whole new avenue of, of costs.
So whether they're in school districts, which is, which is absolutely ridiculous. I mean, that's, that's, and we have Neonet to help us out with all that. Because that's where they, that's where redundancy comes in too. Like, they actually help us with that and security and the, and then the firework configurations and-
They also do our backups. Our whole entire backups of all of our, all of our-
Take a word about that consortium. Lower the prices on, on so many things that we do because we're not buying as an individual eight hundred and fifty student district. We're buying them along with seventeen other school districts at a, at a much reduced rate. And Neonet does a lot of those things in the house wars too, that, and a huge cost savings for us.
Yeah. I read this. It made absolutely no sense at all.
And I don't know that, I didn't turn on the hot show. I saw that a proponent testimony was gonna be today. Almost was curious to see what, what possibly could he say about this as a positive spin. Unless somebody from Spectrum or Wild was not understanding. It's gonna be very per-
And actually, and it's gonna, it's gonna lead off because then people are, we're not gonna, a school wouldn't be able to afford everything. So it's gonna be more hacked through the school systems. And, and that's, that's gonna lead to a whole other big problem.
Sorry, just starting to ground up too. I mean, it really, really is about kind of rebuilding that whole structure that we, we have.
I've been questioning the owners of those companies and what they're getting out of it.
Yeah.
I mean, it just, to me, it sounds like there's some fishy, fishing business happening with your family.
Yeah. But at best, we can work on communicating with legislators. I have no, how unfavorable this is for us.
Please keep us informed about, I mean, conceivable or hopefully likely, when you come July one and have that email.
Yeah. I mean, I will, and I'll, I'll CC you on the, the email to Senator Bell. My understanding is that Senator Bell is not in favor of this. He's kind of herbalized that. I just want to make sure that- I just want to make sure that we should shoot him an email and say, hey, I can't believe that Theresa Cameron will be.
I mean, I think that's one more question too. Like, is that, like, is that how it would impact the beginning of the school year? Maybe to put in all the infrastructure and actually having an email and actually.
It's easy to get run, like, there's no way you don't sort of suck out the language. You can't run as school district.
And now more than ever, we need internet because COVID. Absolutely. Can you possibly play around with the fact that we have to switch something up when internet is kind of a lifeline? And this is just not, not just Neonet, this is every ITC site in the, in the state of Ohio connect and all of them. And I don't know, I don't know the school district that doesn't work through an ITC site that does, that does things internally, even like Cleveland's involved with ITC sites.
It's one of those things to me, if it passes, it's going to be a hot mess. Local to education, you know, it'll be a hot mess. Just to me, with the whole Youngstown, did they do away with all that because they couldn't figure out what they were doing?
Well, they, there's a way out right now. And these Cleveland super tuns have been, they, and they, for the first time, they and Lorraine and Youngstown have a clear path out of the academic distrust commission right now. So while they haven't done away with the, they did not provide a way for them to move out of it, so. Which I, which he was excited by, he thinks, oh, they, I understand, I have him, I mean, he forces two boards that don't like each other. He's got the board that's supporting the academic distrust commission, then he's still at, he's still at their elected board. You know, they meet at opposite times, and he goes, he's kind of the middle man, all back and forth. I can't imagine. We'll keep the board updated. And then just two other small items remaining, discussion fiscal year end. So we're in process of closing fiscal year 2021. Our fiscal year always begins seven, one, and ends six thirty. So we'll be kind of closing out purchase orders, reviewing invoices, closing out grants, reviewing accounts and budgets, reviewing GAAP, and finalizing end of year reports to private account. And then the last item is, we're beginning fiscal year 2022. So we're entering new payroll contracts, sending out salary notices, entering new accounts, budgets, entering new purchase orders, and entering new grants. So that's all I have.
I see your question. So it sounds like the fiscal audit, is that, is that, or have you spoke on that? Or is that pending or?
That would be a good question we can ask Mike Holden, how quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they're different, the other state than CPA firms. Because CPA firms, you know, audits or gaps went to extension, they had to apply for that extension with the other state's office. And sometimes that wouldn't get granted, so you have to complete it within a certain timeframe. Your gap or audit, like your CPA. On the other hand, the other state's office, my understanding is they automatically hand out extensions for their own auditors. So they have no, they're not under any time constraints to complete one of these things. So they can kind of allow it, that's my understanding.
So we can file, but it's basically controlled that law that actually occurred, on laws?
Yeah. Yeah, we completed, you know, we had the field work, and we were out here a couple months ago, I'm going to say for a couple months. So it's in the hands of Matt Holden.
Got it, okay.
Guidelines.
Next up, super tuns business.
Right. Ten A, motion, motion approved made agreement with HDC Automation for building automation and managing systems and services during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year at a cost of nine thousand dollars. B, motion approved agreement with Educational Service Center Northeast Ohio for tuition for PEP prentice at a cost of one hundred fourteen, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars for two students for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. C, motion approved membership at no cost to Ohio High School Authentic Association, grades seven through twelve for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. D, motion to approve the service agreement with Pest Mayhem Incorporated for services for twenty-one, twenty-two school year at a cost of four thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. E, motion approved amendment number one, extending the term with the MOU at Applewood Centers, Incorporated to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, for continued services and live prevention. Education support high-grade school students, staff, and parents at no cost. F, motion approved funding and satisfying agreement with Monarch School for Autism for extended school year services for two students at six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars per student for a total of thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars for summer of two thousand and twenty-one. G, motion approved outplace students attendance at Mentor Care's summer program for extended school year services summer of two thousand and twenty-one. H, motion to approve high-grade association and teachers collective bargaining agreement effective July one, two thousand and twenty-three, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. I, motion approved high-grade association to support employees collective bargaining agreement effective July first, two thousand and twenty, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. J, motion approved salary schedule for the super tuns administrative assistant making part of the exempt employee scheduled benefits. K, motion approved the salary schedule for building and browsing supplies making part of the exempt employee salaries and scheduled benefits. L, approve renewal, motion to renew Ohio's America Online Textbook through the Ohio historical connection for the fourth grade social studies curriculum. As a three-year subscription not to exceed two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. And N, motion to approve agreement with Ripshow Students Incorporated for a two-year period effective with twenty twenty-one school year, twenty twenty-two school year, with photography services specified in the tax agreement. Yes, for those items.
Do you agree?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Staff resignations. A, motion to accept the resignation of John Donald as being the full scorekeeper for Boys and Girls. B, motion to accept the resignation of Miles Patterson as assistant cross-country coach. Employment certification. Motion to approve deployment of Mary Schroder as instrumental vocal teacher on a one-year limited contract, created out of salary schedule BA step one, effective August first, two thousand and twenty-one, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, contingent upon successful completion of BCI FBI record checks and proper certification. Thirteen, motion to amend the skip law. Thirteen A, motion approved employment of Chris Collins as a four-and-a-half-hour bus van driver, step one, in the one-and-a-half-hour custodian, three, step two, contingent upon successful completion of BCI FBI record check and proper certification. B, motion approved employment of Paula Hudson as a five-hour bus van driver, step six, and a two-hour cafeteria worker, step six, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, contingent upon successful completion, BCI FBI record checks. And fourteen, A, motion approved employment of Dave Wallace as dazzle progress coordinator at fifty percent for one year, limited something else contract for twenty-one, twenty-two school year for a stipend of two thousand, five hundred dollars. B, motion approved employment, Brooke Dragon, Christina Zawatski as a high school student council professor for twenty-one, twenty-two school year, contingent upon completion of students, sufficient funding, and successful completion of BCI background checks. C, motion approved employment of Kristen Billman on something on contract for twenty-one, two thousand and twenty, summer school teacher to provide English language instruction to an English language learner on an athlete basis, pretty adopted at salary rate. Motion approved employment of Alex Turner for twenty-one, twenty-two school year, contingent upon successful, number of students, athletes, sufficient funding, and successful completion of BCI FBI checks, proper certification, and applicable. Motion approved up to five days instead of time for Ryan Kelber, athletic director, as daily rate of pay to be taken during the summer of two thousand and twenty-one. And employment and transportation, motion approved. The plan of Paul Hudson on something on contract and bus van driver for summer two thousand and twenty-one, extended summer learning, school, and extended school year camp special education allowance on an athlete basis and power delivery as a sign. As for those items to be approved.
Next time, I'll take a motion to approve the superintendent's business incentive agenda motions. Move by Mr. Sajak, and seconded by Mrs. Adams. Or I mean, discussion.
What do you want to come in here, Matt?
The base.
Base.
I am H, under ten.
Oh, it should be twenty-one. July first, two thousand and twenty-one, not two thousand and twenty.
Is that a, it should be twenty-one.
Twenty-one. So it's not twenty on both of those. It's correct those. I'll make a question. Okay. The HCC agreement, that's for automation, that's an annual, our, our, because of the age of the building and the mechanics, it's kind of a hand-built system. We talked, when we did the generative, you actually move it forward. And even after talking about the yard, because of the, we slide the max and so on, parts of the multiple systems. Whatever, we would go through the slide to be kind of a hand-built system that's not a plug-and-play automation system that we're working building our age. So this annual cost without the PEP prentice, this for, the PEP prentice in the Applewood, or not Applewood, and, and PEP prentice and Monarch, those are for existing students. There are, we don't have any new students there. I think I've mentioned a number of times that those are students that were already in those programs when we opened up our own resource rooms. We gave the families the option to stay, kind of, sort of stay in those programs. And some students came back, some students stayed, but those, we did not pull anybody back in. And I, my knowledge, we haven't had anybody new, since we established our resource room, go, go to Monarch, or I think we were even maybe out of government order at this point in time. OHSAA agreement, that's free right now. We, we talked, actually, I was a proponent of the OHSAA charging fee. I think what they're going to do is they're going to charge per sport, which they already do. So when we do an entry, when we enter into the sophomore, we pay a twenty-five-dollar trip fee to OHSAA at that time. I think what they're going to do is they're going to, it's my understanding that some schools go ahead and determine. I don't know why you'd have to season that in a determined as a member. But the, the OHSAA, after going through COVID, was obviously in some financial distress. My recommendation from the get-go was to, we've got to free ride from the OHSAA for many years. They established a fee schedule. My thought was thousand dollars for small school, two thousand for mid-sized. Whatever, what they came up with is based on number of sports. So our, our fee really, what we pay the OHSAA overall hasn't been dramatically from what we're already paying with our entry fees for the tournament. So, but that's, that's coming down the road, of course, and that referendum did pass by them. Pest management system, they've been with us for the last couple of years. They're on the spot, they come as needed, and they're doing the best they can with an eighty-five-year-old building. Applewood Centers just extends the MOU for services to them. Monarch again, extended school year for one student. Mentor Care's, that's extended school year for two students. We've reduced our extended school year cost dramatically because UCP is here, as some of our students can participate, UCP right here on, on, on site. The teachers agreements with, the collective bargaining with the teachers, collective bargaining with, with Chase. We wrapped those up, gone through those. The salary schedules for the, my administrative assistant in Billy Ross, I presented those to you last year, they never got approved by the board, so they never got a GAAP to the exempt benefits. Now, if we talk about those, I present them to you, I never worked through the process to have them board who says they're not part of the exempt benefits package. So this, this approval will let make them part of it. And as, I will, we will continue to add to that. And that's something about doing it with this personnel, I've got assistant manager supervisor. You have to hear that we will add salary schedules to the exempt benefits package so that instead of every time that contract comes around, we have a basis to start with. And Mr. Sajak, thank you for supplying some of what Parker Valley got. That, that's a, that's a foundation for a start for us on that. Ohio's America Online Curriculum, it's a continuation of one we use. Ripshow, the question was asked about photographers out there. We've got a lot of alumni and local people that, that are outstanding photographers. They're, they're, right now, there are two photographers that service schools and that's Light Touch and Ripshow. Are they, are they two main ones anymore? A lot of, Light Touch in the last, since the tenure I've been there, absorbed at least two other photography firms. Kind of reduced the feel a little bit. I don't know that anybody's overjoyed with either one of them, quite honestly. So we, we got a two-year with Ripshow. I did try to talk to Ripshow about maybe letting one of the local photographers handle our athletics because some of those people have done a great job, I've seen what the villagers do. They're not, it's kind of all or nothing with them, so it's, it's the best we got. We'll continue to look around, but they're really a lot of choices. John Donald's a longtime helpless as a scorekeeper. He's moving on. Miles Patterson is going to be assistant cross-country coach. Instead, he's going to be a dad this summer, so we're going to give a free pass on that one. Mary Schroder has come through the process. I think probably over twenty advocates for the, for Mr. Sokol's position. We talked about one of the very, a four-tiered process. I think the last step of that, prior to the, the, the last two finalists, we brought four members of the Scarlet Angels in and, and had the two finalists trying to direct the four young ladies in a musical piece and talk to the students then about, about that. So Mary comes to us, she did a walk-through sub last year at Berkshire. She was the percussion director for Lakewood's band last year, Lakewood's marching band. So she was working both sides of town. She was a student teacher monitor. She started as an engineering music dual major case. And after about a semester, realized that she didn't want to be an engineer anymore and talked to her music instructor, and just has great passion for it. And I, I let her know yesterday that her first task will be, we've just been approved by Ohio School Boards Association to perform at OSBA. So she's going to have to get the Scarlet Eagles ready to travel to Columbus for a performance at OSBA. So Reno, just note five names on that, that's, that's good stuff. Chris Clements is coming on as a bus van driver in custodian three. Paula Hudson, Matt finished up with it about three o'clock today. Was that in my office? Paula comes to us and has a wealth of experience. Has actually done some scheduling before and is going to be a great add-on. I think with most recently, was with one of the private bus firms. But he has some history with local districts here. So we're excited to bring Paul with some, with Paul's background on board. I think that moving forward may help us in some other ways in the transportation department as well. Dave Wallace handles half of the dazzle, part of the, the, the technology part of it. The supplemental positions for the student council. Kristen Zelman, that's not part of the extended learning plan, or she'll be tutoring an EL student, English language learner student. Alex, I've been around helping us for the last couple of years, just graduated. One of those guys that just, you know, keeps showing up to help us, and he's going to continue to work the scoreboards in the House force. Ryan Kelber got two hundred and ten day contract, essentially, and there's a lot of work still to be done there this summer. I talked to Ryan about possibly restructuring his contract next year and give him some additional duties that will actually take it from a two-ten to probably a two-forty because there's just, there's just time during the summer when he needs to be here and get things ready. This fall, sports start so early in August anymore. I can't wait to start on August fourth, and a lot of sports are starting. There's a lot of things that need to be done upfront. And employment for transportation, that's supplemental positions for summer. That's for camp routes and some of the extended school year bus and network running right now. For those routes as well, so.
Any questions or any discussions?
I'm sorry, can you hear the motion in a second?
It was, I don't know the second, right? Mr. Sajak, it was first, right? Mr. Sajak, the other?
We'll go with that one. Mr. Sajak.
Hi.
Mrs. Etter.
Hi.
Mr. Adams.
Hi.
Mr. Lehman.
Hi.
Mrs. Sugar.
Hi. Motion is five to zero. Next up, superintendent's.
Couple things next. And I put in time talks this week, next Wednesday, we'll do a special meeting from six to seven-thirty to discuss the mascot. That's, I'll be very clear about the guidelines, that's just for comments, it's not going to be a debate, that's not a question and answer period. That's the community members, that we've talked, been talking about that for a while. And I, I'll hold the board members' comments for the end of the meeting. I'll make a statement at the beginning of that, and everybody will have their statements to do that. We'll have a Zoom meeting as well to discuss the future of the mascot and moving forward on that end of it. Legislative updating, no announcement on the budget bill, which is good news right now. They're still battling over the Fair Funding plan on the funding. And actually, some good news was the three-point-one billion in additional state revenue that was raised because now that makes the Fair Funding plan more doable. Because with the caps on, how much they can raise the budget by, they're just saying, well, we can't do the Fair Funding bill because we can't fund it. Well, with the, with the additional revenue, it makes it much more doable. So that, that's, that's a benefit of that. Jim Whistler unfortunately is not going to return next year to work with Best. His partner has some health issues, Jim's head started to have some health issues. He thinks it's time to step away, it stabs me greatly. I would really love to bring Jim back to a Best meeting, a board meeting, to officially recognize Jim. I think it would be better to do it at a Best meeting, would be awesome. He's been such an integral part about that. I've said, without any hesitation, that my four years in education, the Best was still there. uh, the best facilitator that I've ever worked with, uh, as far as being able to get groups to stay on task, and he has this accomplishment, and still, without being overbearable. So Jim, uh, wish Jim all the best, um, I need to call him and get an update on his garden, because we love to talk garden to each other. Uh, I've got a letter from Chase and Chad, that I'd like to read to the board. On behalf of Chad and Chase, we want to thank Kyra Heights Board of Education, Superintendent Tom Evans, and the administrative team of work throughout the negotiation process these last several months. The study of good faith leadership in the district turned a process that can be contentious at times into a positive, respectful process of partnership and cooperation. Both unions felt heard, respected, and appreciated. Chad and Chase continue to be dedicated to and thankful for the opportunity to make Kyra Heights Schools one of the best districts in the state of Ohio, and we will continue to work every day to serve the members of our community. Sincerely, Aaron Zane, Chase president, John Lloyd, Chad president. And one other thing I have to shout, uh, Jim Lloyd at Ossop Falls is putting together a group, uh, that, that's kind of, it's gonna work with a group called Brave Ed, Brave ED, Brave Ed, which is, uh, about school accountability, and we've latched on that, and, uh, that may very well be some professional development for my administrative team next year, I think about, uh, last looked at, about a dozen, uh, schools in northeast Ohio, and John Tanner runs that, and it's, it's, it's more than, if you, if you follow Jim Lloyd on Twitter at all, he's, he's the, he's the school superintendent over at, over Ossop Falls, he's like the anti-reporter superintendent. It's not right, he, he got his A banner for the high school, and he sent it back to the state, um, two years ago. And not to be disrespectful, he goes, this is not the sole measure of our, of our district, and we want to make aware of that, that, uh. So, uh, Jim is walking the walk now, he got, got ahold of John Tanner, who's nationally known, and John's going, uh, we're gonna see about scheduling some dates and working on about, uh, accountability system that we would, we would become a part of as well, so excited about that.
All right, next, uh, board policy review and adoption. I will take a motion to adopt policy sixty-four twenty-three, use credit cards as reviewed on June ninth, twenty-twenty-one, and June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. Did I make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Motion made by me, seconded by Mr. Neiman, any discussion? Second reading. Here in non-rolling off.
Mrs. Sugar.
Hi.
Mr. Neiman.
Hi.
Mr. Donner.
Hi.
Mrs. Etter.
Hi.
Mr. Sajak.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero. Next up, board discussions, community reports, McCollum's. Who would like to move first?
No eye contact, there's a teaching, no damage.
Yeah, well, I just, first of all, I had a pre-presentation to spend this two-day about these, uh, matters of the current agenda, that is all, it's, I think it saves time for us in the meeting, but it helps me become a better educator, a more informed. Also, I wanted to basically echo the sentiments that were expressed to the next chapter, as a board member, it's gratifying to see the two parties working together toward accounting and to do so in our, in our professional manner, so I appreciate what the administration's done, and I say that collectively, broadly. And I also appreciate the union's leadership in, in, uh, working toward satisfactory outcomes.
Yes, just, I'd like to echo part of that, it's truly, the board should work on two boards, both of which have negotiations which were very, uh, went very smoothly, where both parties felt good about each other at the end. It, it certainly makes our job as board members a lot simpler, and it's certainly benefited the community as well. Speaking of the career center, our next meeting is, uh, tomorrow night, I don't have a lot to report now, um, but, uh, I think I already mentioned, we have, uh, we've already approved both the, uh, very critical of the Chad, Chad and Chase, and then the last item in that area is the, uh, couple of administrative contracts that we've taken care of, and, and that would be it, I think, see? School year.
This job doesn't, it's backing very openly to the mayor, uh, his assessment of those two, the others, Chad and Chase, but, uh, I, I, I see the volume, uh, it speaks volumes, just in that, like, one page, one, that, um, it's really, there's such a strong partnership that this, um, our, our team, our administrative team, and, um, people who work there, so that speaks volumes, and, uh, of, of good systems, it's very much, um, nice to see that, and, uh, it was great seeing the softball girls here today, glad we were able to recognize them, but keep that for the next session.
It's kind of a, it comes, I, I, I thank you, the administration, also the, uh, Chad and Chase leaders, um, in making the process, um, go so smoothly, like, the party, and, I think that was, like, that's outstanding, it looks like, so I'd like to all be here, so thank you very much, both, I look at, doing both sides. Um, again, you know, I, I can't say enough good things about the, the girls softball team, I think they're made, they need a lot of the, to come together at the time they needed it, and, uh, and I think that, like, works does that sometimes to, to, to communities, so I think, um, I've seen them here today, and actually, the love that they made is, is pretty incredible. I mean, it really was, um, it was a great, a great opportunity as well, so to be there with all the folks that were here today, all the girls that are on the team, the coaches, and the parents, so, that's all.
Moving right along, item number nineteen, future agenda pickers. You know, there'll be lonely, uh, Mr. Richard's patch.
The next meeting, it, it says July seventh, and unless you're all gonna throw a birthday party for me, we're not meeting on the seventh, um, the actual date is July twenty-first. And I'm supposed to schedule, we have a meeting from that time, so, um, depending on what, what time they dock it, and how much business there is, and if we're out of main handling, I may zoom in, or we'll figure something out.
So you're here for your birthday, but not taking?
Correct.
So we'll just play it by ear if we need to cancel?
We had that meeting, because it seems like every year that we did have a meeting, we had business, and then July, and now that we've got the meeting on, we're not, you know, but we said that when we scheduled it, you know, it lost some momentum.
We could do, where we need with you guys, an executive session to go where evaluations, kind of July.
Okay.
So maybe that, uh, when, you know, if we don't get a meeting.
I don't mind.
But you're, but for sure, so that we all here, for sure, July twenty-first.
They have to be coming.
Is not.
Not with the gloves.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to, so just check, maybe the schedule, maybe that following Wednesday, or the previous one?
Yeah, let, let's get into July, because it looks like there's gonna need to be something on the, uh, agenda, we can determine whether we go earlier or later, so. I'm, I'm not anticipating any July time resignations, um, sometimes that throws a wrench in them.
We may have some appointment, we've got TA physician, food service physicians that need hired, so probably August first.
So probably later rather than before, right? Okay.
I guess, you know, like, future deadline, it would be just a matter of, the broad damage, I guess, if we go forward, whether that happens or doesn't.
I'm trying to board the emails, it's like, yeah, well, so.
So item twenty-eight, it should be noted for education members, receive their agendas several days prior to the actual meeting, thus they get a considerable opportunity to study it, ask questions, et cetera. Upcoming regular meetings, we've already talked about July twenty-first will not be happening, so stay tuned if a meeting needs to be called. Uh, but that will be of August eleventh and August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, seven P M. At this time, I hear Michael look at the board, a charge to executive session pursuant to R I C, section one, seven, one, two, two, G one. For the purpose of considering evaluation, employment, and their compensation of employees and or officials of the school district. Second by Mr. Neiman, any discussion? Would you say there's no action, that we'll be taking after? Roll off, please.
Mrs. Sugar.
Hi.
Mr. Neiman.
Hi.
Mr. Donner.
Hi.
Mrs. Etter.
Hi.
Mr. Sajak.
Motion passes five to zero, it's eight oh five, and we are in executive session.